Moving on to item number one, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up to last meeting on June 5th at which we discussed the potential for the future operations of Sports Park. During that meeting, the city council asked us to get together with the Sports Park Collaborative that had been in attendance at that meeting. They assigned councilmember Spriggs and Bill Bray to meet with that group and city manager Brown and I all -- I'm sorry, councilmember Bill Bray and Patton, I was looking at you, to attend that meeting, and they did, and city manager Brown and I also attended that meeting. We had a representative from Little League, Don Spicer, a representative from girls softball, Jim Lecoeur, Candy Younger, we had Tim O'Neil, and a community member, Daniel Gorticchea, was also at the meeting, and it was held -- there's a mistake in the staff report, by the way, it continually referred to June 17th as that meeting, it actually occurred on Tuesday, June 18th. So we had that meeting, and we discussed several things, and the topics for discussion started with basically three options that were generally considered to be options that we could pursue. The first was status quo, to continue the operations at the Sports Park under city management, possibly supplemented by volunteer assistance. The next would be to just negotiate with the Boys and Girls Club and eventually contract with them to operate the Sports Park. And the third would be to issue a formal request for proposals to which many organizations could respond. So we discussed those three items, and after some time, it was the consensus of the group to do sort of a hybrid of that and to issue an RFP, what I would call a focused RFP, just to the two primary respondents from the first effort, that would be the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, based on specific specifications that could be developed to put into that request for proposals. Staff's objective is that the process would establish goals to be achieved by either the YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club, that it would set specific criteria by which to gauge the proposals to manage Sports Park, would be open and transparent to the public, and would involve the public through what we're calling a Sports Park Task Force and public discussions at future city council meetings. If the city council decides, and I would ask at the end of my presentation if councilmembers Patton and Bill Bray would like to add anything if I might have missed something, if the council wishes to, they can request and receive proposals from the Y and the Boys and Girls Club. They may wish to request that councilmembers Bill Bray and Patton work with this Sports Park Task Force. They could, the city council that is, decide on appointments to the Sports Park Task Force, and during the meeting, there were several options of what might occur there, whether it be councilmembers Patton and Bill Bray along with representatives from that group that we met with on June 18th. The city council could decide to select different members to join that group. There was also discussion during the meeting as to whether or not we would try to solicit a -- an expert in sports park and recreation services, and maybe there was actually discussion about getting a person on that Sports Park Task Force that might in some way have some, not affiliation with, but represent the interests of the YMCA, since it was perceived during that meeting that most of the group, other than city staff and the councilmembers, were from the collaborative. So that's an item that we would ask the council to consider as to who might participate on the task force.
Excuse me, Mr. Wade, I've been informed, and I apologize, we had a power outage here, and I understand that the big screens are not operating. We in front of us have what the staff is going through right now. I think perhaps we could take a break and make copies of the staff report and pass them out to the public, because I don't think it's quite right that we get to see what we have here with the public, so if that's possible, we print out a couple dozen at least.
We'll print out the PowerPoint.
Okay, so let's see, we're gonna take a slight recess while we print some of those things out for you out there. Would you like to call the meeting back to order? Men and women, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Spriggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Bray.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Mayor Potem Brad.
Here.
Mayor Janney.
Here. Once again, I apologize, the assistant city clerk does have more copies for anybody that didn't receive any, and we go ahead and proceed, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and also for those in attendance who've got a copy, that we're essentially on page three, they're not numbered, but the third page that starts at council, council decides to request and receive proposals. And I was informing the city council that one of the ideas that came out of this meeting on June 18th was to form a Sports Park Task Force. One of the requests that we have with council is to decide who would make up that task force. It was discussed that there was a number of options, both the councilmembers in attendance on that, at that meeting on June 18th, members from the collaborative, potentially other sports affiliated or recreation service affiliated people from the community or elsewhere, as well as potentially somebody who may have some advocacy for the YMCA, given again that the people at the meeting on Tuesday were largely, if not entirely, representing the collaborative. So the council would decide on appointments. The primary role of the Sports Park Task Force initially would be to develop the criteria that might go into a request for proposals. The criteria in the request that was requested some time ago, at a minimum, we would encourage those, the criteria to start with provision of increased recreational services and opportunities at Sports Park, decrease to whatever extent possible in the costs to operate the city or to the Sports Park to the city, and then three, that it would also provide priority use to the Imperial Beach Little League as well as Imperial Beach girls softball. In addition, the Sports Park Task Force could come up with other types of requirements, whether they apply specifically to the skate park or operations of the rec center or other types of requirements. The other thing that we're asking the council to consider is whether or not once that task force, again, if it chooses to create that task force, comes up with the specifications for an RFP, whether or not we bring that back to the council so that the council in its entirety might get an opportunity to review the RFP and the specifications and discuss those, add or modify any of those specifications, and then authorize its issuance. The council could just elect to allow the Sports Park Task Force to do that, to come up with the specifications and go ahead and have staff issue the RFP. One thing that isn't in the staff report that I'd like to point out, and if you have any questions about this, you can ask or direct them to our city attorney, is that an affirmative or formal action by the city council to form a task force on which two elected officials sit, or any body of the, a formal action to form any number of other, that includes a number of community members, so two councilmembers plus at least one more community member would be a Brown Act board, so it would be subject to requirements of the Brown Act. If there were no members of the council on it, it would still, and it was formed by a formal action of this council, that too would be a Brown Act board, so it's something to keep in mind, that doesn't represent any practical issues really, other than we'd have to advise the task force on Brown Act matters, and it's something the council should In terms of a schedule, we would look at having that first effort by the Sports Park Task Force, that is, the formation of criteria and putting together, assembling that request for proposals to take part in July and August. If the council so chooses, we would bring back the request for proposals specifications to this council in September. The RFP would be issued to the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA, and both would be asked to respond by a specific date, and if the council chooses, or if the Sports Park Task Force would like, and the council supports that, they could conduct what we are calling in this handout, a pretty big conference with the respondents, the Y as well as the Boys and Girls Club. In October and November, the proposals would be reviewed by the Sports Park Task Force. They could again request individual meetings with either of the respondents or both, and as well as presentations of their proposal. In November, the Sports Park Task Force would provide a recommendation to the city council, selecting one of the respondents. The recommendation would obviously state why the particular organization has been selected, the reasons for it being selected, and why it's been selected over the other, and it would also state the deal points to be included in any potential contract with that organization for the operation of the Sports Park, as well as the deal points that were outlined in the request for proposals. And then the council would select either the YMCA or Boys and Girls Club, following that recommendation. In November and December, the city attorney and staff would draft and negotiate a contract with the organization selected and authorized by the city council, and it would be reviewed for consistency with the Sports Park Task Force, to make sure it achieved the objectives of the RFP and the deal points and the specifications, and then it would be recommended to the city council for authorization to execute that agreement. So at this point, the city manager's recommending that the city council review and comment on the process that's been outlined, and there are several questions that we would like the city council to address. First is just a very basic question, do we issue an RFP to just the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club as outlined in the PowerPoint presentation? Should we form the ad hoc task force, the Sports Park Task Force, to work through specifications in the RFP and make recommendations to the city council? Should the council create a Sports Park Task Force and appoint the two members that were present on June 18th to that task force? Who else, if anybody, should be on that task force, or would the council suggest? And assuming that the council responded affirmatively to those questions, should the RFP specifications be brought back to the council for discussion once they're formulated? Or should the Sports Park Task Force recommendations for that RFP just go without further council discussion and be issued at that point? So those are some of the questions that staff is requesting the city council consider, and as I mentioned, if you have any questions regarding the ad hoc committee, our city attorney can answer those, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
As would be expected, we have several public speaker slips, but I'd like to hear from, are there any further comments from the two members of our council that was part of that meeting or this month?
Yeah, I'll say a couple words. First of all, the meeting that we met with the coalition, I have to say, very cordial, very productive meeting, and I could see that this whole process is moving forward. So I left that meeting feeling very good, with a good feeling that this is gonna be resolved the right way, as well as a very informative meeting with the YMCA rep, you know, I had a nice talk with him, and everybody seems willing to negotiate, and I think in the end, we're gonna move forward, we're gonna meet the needs of the community, cost effective, we're gonna have complete transparency, and in the end, overall buy-in by the public, and so I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Bill Bray, if you have anything to add?
I think Mr. Patton summed it up.
Do we have any initial questions from other members of the council for staff on any of the things Mr. Wade mentioned?
Question.
Sir, please, please.
Thank you. At the meeting, at the June 18th meeting, was the Brown Act issue discussed?
Yeah, councilmember Brad, no, it was not, it was not brought to our attention until later.
Okay, and then the pre-bid conference, that's pretty much a standard procedure with some big contracts, and?
Yes, with big contracts it is, and oftentimes with RFPs, you do have the teams come and present to whatever committee is reviewing, so it's not uncommon.
Thank you.
Mr. Spriggs?
I know you have some speaker slips there, Mr. Mayor, but we've heard from three of the people involved in the meeting, but we haven't really heard from collaborative members, and I don't know whether the speaker slips reflect collaborative participants in the discussion, because I really would like to hear their perspectives, you know, that's what we're gonna get them, that's great.
I do have several speaker slips, and they include members of the collaborative, I believe all but one, it seems, is here to say something, may so. So I'll start with those right off the bat, Candy Younger? And I know that several people donated time, but it's been a policy six minutes, it's possible?
Candice Younger, 682 Ocean Lane. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the mayor and city council for the opportunity being presented here tonight. Two weeks ago, we asked for the chance to provide you an alternative solution to manage Sports Park. You listened and offered us a way to take a more active role in the decision process. For Imperial Beach, this is unprecedented, and I applaud council and staff for stepping outside the box and recognizing the importance of the community wanting to be involved and informed. In reviewing the city manager's recommendation, I'm not 100 percent comfortable with the idea of the task force being responsible for creating the parameters or specifications for the RFP. I say this because of two things. One, we have no formal background in this sort of process, and two, it's still unclear to me why the original RFP would need to be changed if the objectives are still the same. My suggestion would be staff could write the parameters of the RFP, the task force could add or delete items and make recommendations. I would hate to put the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA at a disadvantage in obtaining the management role at Sports Park by something we included in the RFP, something that was not obtainable or incorrectly proposed. I would also like to suggest that council support the idea of the community being able to suggest recommendations to the task force. This can be done easily by sending an email to ibsptf@groups.facebook.com. This will be a direct way to reach the task force. For the record, it's been brought to my attention by several community members that the task force is only being sought after to give the impression of community involvement, but will carefully, be carefully orchestrated by staff to weed out any contenders, so in the end, only, the only viable choice will be the YMCA. I hope this is not the case, and this attempt to allow community involvement is truly being explored as an attempt to facilitate transparency and community involvement, not to give one more favorable opportu -- one, a more favorable opportunity. I trust these are your intentions. I believe we're on the right path here, and it may take some time to work out the kinks, but this is a great starting point to renew the people's trust in our local government, and I hope we can guide each other in the right direction for a common goal of making Imperial Beach the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tim O'Neil, I believe you were part of it as well, and I see that you have some time, donate six minutes, sir.
Tim O'Neil, 682 Ocean Lane. Mayor, I probably won't need six minutes, but if I go over three, thank you. First, I want to thank city council and staff for considering the implementation of a Sports Park Task Force, which would include members of the community. Input and assistance from residents should be actively encouraged by our, actively encouraged by our city leaders when solutions are needed, and including the public in any process is a good thing, I thank you. With that being said, you will notice that my name is included in tonight's staff report as a possible member of the proposed task force. While I do appreciate being included on the list after much thought and enlightened of new information that was recently brought to the attention of the collaboration, I think it's in everybody's best interest that I remove myself from the inclusion in any Sports Park Task Force. At last week's meeting with representatives from the city, a member of the city's contingency stated he would remain engaged with the task force as long as things remained positive. While I had absolute faith in my ability to stay positive, I have zero faith in this individual's ability to differentiate between negativity and attempts by the task force at correcting a record that has been established by staff reports that have been polluted with lies, mistruths, deception, and biased information. To neuter the task force in not getting to the facts, the true facts, is a complete disservice, and it's not a negative, that is reality. Where we stand now, nobody knows where this is gonna go, because if we rely on the past information that's been included in staff reports, been produced by our city leaders, there's no way that we can have an absolute unprejudiced decision. So for that reason, I'm gonna remove myself, because this council and many members of the community know me, and they know, in fact, one councilmember has repeatedly said that I'm the first to tell you guys when you do something wrong, and I am, but I'm also the first to tell you when you guys have done something right. You guys are doing right by establishing the task force, but I can't be on it, because I will tell you what you've done wrong. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you. I see a couple of the members that were at that meeting. Mr. Spicer, did you want to say anything at this time? I mean, you were at that meeting, I know you don't have a speaker slip in, but I think one of my colleagues would like to hear from anybody that might have been at that meeting.
Don Spicer, 1417 Ninth. I was at the meeting, and I do support the committee, and I think it is the right way to go. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lecoeur?
I wasn't speaking, but I was at the meeting, I did like the way it was going, we were working things through, and I think it's something we should continue, because like the air is saying, it does show transparency, it is giving a lot of ideas from various people, and I think that's the way we should go.
Thank you. Mr. Kupitri, did you want to say anything? I know you were the last member that was there from the community.
Daniel Gorticchea, 1085, Imperial Beach. Yeah, I think really getting the public involved, that was the problem, I think, with the first unknown RFPs. The public hadn't known, saying so, and I think that's the importance of having some type of task force where we can deal with community members, bring in their ideas, share them with you, and I'm on the same page with Candy, is I don't think we should be coming up with what the requirements are in this RFP, I think that we can assist the city once they come up with them and help weed out what are the good ideas, what are the bad ideas, and go from there. Thank you.
I do have several speaker slips of persons that might not have been there but have been very interested, and Erica Lowry?
Erica Lowry, 740 Oneonta. How to proceed, that was the question looming after the June 5th meeting. It looks like we're on a rare win-win track. Increased community involvement, win. The idea of a task force of volunteers will help get the community involved, starting over, so to say, win. There's a chance to look at all the options out there, not just one single service provider. Lessening staff workload, another win. The task force can review the proposals with the community's goals in mind, and I agree with Candy, setting the proposals is not something that I'm looking forward to. I do strongly recommend the use of a task force for this and for future issues. Thank you, staff, for taking the community's opinions into consideration on this very important topic.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Larry DeJean, and I'm here more to support the idea of children playing on the field. Now, when you have Little League that tells young players that they can't move up and they have to leave the park, or you have Little League players telling them that they can go play in another league, and they won't sign a release for you so they can't play on the All-Stars, those are issues that you have to do, but it's not so much Little League that I don't trust, it's the idea that when we, when you get these parks out, they should be for everybody to use, whether it be travel ball or Little League, and when Little League is not using them, they should be available for travel ball or anybody else wants to use them, and they shouldn't be locked, which I've been a big proponent of. The fact that the board members, you know, use their own power to do what they want and make 12-year-olds pay and not be able to play on All-Star teams, you know, is not right, or have to leave, leave the league simply because they don't follow the rules. So someone has to watch over what's going on here, and like I say, it's about using the fields themselves. I've been on the board, I've seen them, you know, seen some of the processes, I've gone and raised $5,000 through gifts for Little League, I painted the fields myself, when Mar Vista dugout blew down, I took $800 out of my own pocket and built it. So I give to the kids. Little League is supposed to be free and giving to the kids, and the fields are supposed to be available to everyone when they're not being used. Blocking them and the current success of what's going on, you know, is unacceptable. And when you have parents that are on the board that send their children to Montgomery, not even to Mar Vista, or play travel ball, and not allow this to happen in the league itself, that's just not right. So in closing, I'd like to say, it's not so much who you put in charge, but it's availability for people that live in IB to use a field when it's not being used for IB Little League, and that's a big issue. So I want you to consider that when you're, when you're making your decision here.
Thank you.
I have to step out front real quick, so we can see my mom. My mother-in-law's out here, she's in Texas. They should be longer.
So we need, yeah, the man, we have to have the end of the microphone now.
Well, I wanted to show you. Again, my name is Cheryl Quinones, I live at 1137 Iris Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Today, I come to you with a concern that our park and recreation facility is being looked at as an outsourced opportunity. Outsourcing is a bad word in America. So many jobs have gone overseas, you don't know who you're talking to, Hong Kong, or Japan, or China, when you call a business. When we call here, we expect to talk to someone here in Imperial Beach City Hall with an issue or department that we need to have discussion with, we get direct information. By outsourcing our park and recreation, you would be outsourcing to Hong Kong, in Imperial Beach's view, and in Joe Public's view. YMCA is not a permanent structure here in Imperial Beach and never has been. By having the YMCA here would establish their employment, their opportunity to hire people, would lay off people that work here in our town. The community that supports the park and the cleaning and the supporting of the leagues, whichever league it is, or the skate park, they would be out of a job. So, again, President Obama wants to keep our jobs in our town. I think he provided us fiscal stimulation bill monies that support this. I'm concerned about the gag order that you had on the jury case in San Diego. I'm concerned about all the inner workings of the board, the council, and the staff, and I understand that the staff makes reasonable recommendations, but I also know that as leaders, elected leaders in our community, that we hold a special responsibility, a special responsibility to Imperial Beach citizens and the children that live here. We've kept our town free of Walmarts, we've kept our town free of all those enterprises that would have taken away from mom and pops' little stores, and we were lucky to get Savons in here, but that's it, okay? I don't go to Walmart, I'd rather go to our Goodwill up there. So to outsource our public park is, to me, something that is just, should not even be considered. We should go back, hit the books, and find out where our money can be better spent at. So I thank you very much for your time, and good evening.
Thank you. Vincent Parnsworth?
My name is Vincent Parnsworth, and I live in Imperial Beach, and I'm speaking for myself. May I? My name is Vincent Parnsworth and I live in Imperial Beach and I'm speaking for myself. And just as I look over this, I'm not sure if there's going to be a vote, but I think I'd like to ask you to vote no if you are going to vote because the part where it says substantially reduce or eliminate the city's operating expenses and long-term capital costs at Sports Park, I don't think that's really in the public spirit, you know? I think that the city should actually do the opposite. I would call on you to make a resolution to say that you're going to support the park and that parks are not to make revenue, that parks are to be supported. And in the past year, you've said that privatization of public parks and making revenue from them is a trend to follow and I really think that's wrong. And I would talk about how privatization has been sometimes a big failure in the past. And I told you before about YMCA is going bankrupt and so other people have talked about finances and the unfortunate state of Ivy finances, which former Congressman Bill Bray last time mentioned was based on things not, wasn't your fault, is what he said, it was previous decisions. But while that's being sorted out and this management is being sorted out, I really think it's wrong to make any decision on the sports park because it's unclear, the budget is so unclear. And it seems to me that reality is the sports park budget is something like 1% and I don't see how, you know, you've been worrying about 1% of the budget while there are other things, well, the whole budget is a mess, first of all, and you sorting that out and you have until, I believe it's September to answer the grand jury on that. So I would urge you to put it off because of that and also because there's a, you're still talking about the YMCA in this and, you know, there's almost unanimous decision, unanimous opposition to the YMCA in this town and they've gone on record insulting people in Ivy, saying they're going to make poor kids sign up for scholarships just to go to the park, you know? And I know I'm almost out of time, but I just think it's going to cause you a really bigger problem if you continue to even go for the YMCA. In fact, I would ask since the YMCA is here, maybe they make a, they withdraw from negotiations, maybe come up and make a statement tonight. And last, but I think I would just urge you to kind of reverse this whole thing and make a resolution to support the park, you know, support it with city money, find ways to work with the coalition who have all these ideas of generating all the revenue, but do a fixed percentage of the budget and/or minimum forever. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Gwendolyn Albert?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gwendolyn Albert and I'm also a resident of Imperial Beach and I'm representing myself. I am here to urge you also to safeguard public resources for the Sparks Park Recreation Center by specifying a percentage of the city's annual budget to be dedicated to the park's maintenance and management in perpetuity irrespective of the involvement of other entities in financing or managing the facility. It is surprising to see that after the public spoke on June 5th, the city is still considering the YMCA as a potential candidate for managing the sports park. I personally believe that if the YMCA assumes management of the facility, it will be a serious obstacle to the public continuing to have its say about how the park is run. Please keep the management of this park local. Thank you.
That concludes our public speaker slips. We're up for discussion on council at the moment. We have some questions and answers that staff has asked us as far as where we're going. This is all about the process, what direction we are going to try to take our recreation facilities here in Imperial Beach. Any initial comments from my colleagues as far as staff recommendations, questions, answers and what procedures we might consider going forward with Mr. Spriggs?
Well, I asked to hear and from the collaborative participants and didn't need to because they were, several of them were already signed up. But I'm, I'm very pleased. I had originally encouraged this kind of a process to take place with the representatives of the community that's most engaged and I'm glad that it has taken place and has gotten off to a good start. And this is really, you know, the kind of approach that has the best chance of succeeding on a contentious issue is city working with the community every step of the way and all of the information open and available to everybody, all the pros and cons being discussed. And yes, it might be, it might be kind of labor-intensive to work on specifications or to review proposals, but, and I think city staff should try to make that as, as painless as possible for the community participants, but it's really important that the community participate in developing the specifications for the RFP, if we're going to go that way, arguing them out, what works, what doesn't work, what's clearly unbiased in terms of favoring one party or another and that the community participate in reviewing the RFPs. I really like that about this proposal because it really shows involvement and discussion and it's not going to be easy, but it's the only way really to go, I think. So I think that as responsible public officials and custodians of the, of the sports park property, I for one would say that the, that the specifications for the RFP should probably come back to council and gives another opportunity for a public discussion and openness on what's going out rather than go straight into the RFP mailing out to the prospective bidders or what have you. So I would favor that again in the interest of openness and another opportunity to hear from the community on what they think about the final version. There may be some other issues that, and I'm sure other colleagues would like to comment as well, but those are my comments at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
Thank you. And I hope somebody corrects me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wade, Bill Bray or anybody was at the meeting we had last week. But the coalition as well as the whole group of us that met on the 18th, we agreed that the Y being part of this was going to just be in all fairness and that's correct, right? And that's why they're on the, that's why they're, that's why they're on there. So in all fairness, that's why they're there, just to clarify. And I like Mr. Guo Kechia and Mrs. Unger's idea of actually possibly the staff coming, kind of going against what you said, but if we could come, the staff could come up with a good solid outline and let the task force fine-tune it, it might be simpler and easier and with less arguing and I think it would go well. And then finally, oh, not finally, community response via email, what a great idea. I think as much input as possible, getting that email out there. But the one thing, want to be clear, I don't see this as conspiracy to bring the Y in. You know, I have ethics and I'm, you know, 30-year school teacher and 30-year lifeguard and, or 20-year school teacher, 30-year lifeguard and I would not volunteer to be on this meeting if I wanted to do something backhanded to bury you. I mean, I'm here for the good of you and I, no conspiracy. True. Thank you.
Ms. Bragg?
Thank you. Well said. We've come a long way as a community on this, on this issue and I think we're getting there. I would like to thank the people involved in the collaborative. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of heartache, it's a lot of sweat equity that you're putting into this community. So I'm a little, quite honestly, Mr. O'Neill, I'm a little, I don't know why you want your name removed. I'm a little disappointed because I always appreciated your voice at the sport, at the skate park. But I realize you have your own reasons. I agree, I think the RFP should be written by the staff, that's what we pay them to do. That's where their expertise lies. Definitely it needs to come back to the collaborative and to the council. It needs to be vetted, everybody needs to have their chance to pick it apart, add to it or take away. The makeup of the task force, I'm a little concerned about council members being on there. Just the issue of the Brown Act, I have been on commissions in this community and the Brown Act was always, on some of them was an issue. In some ways, it's helpful and in other ways, I often felt like my hands were tied. I want to talk to everybody and with the Brown Act, you can't. So I'm not sure how, you know, what we can do with that. I would, I would hope that the people who started out on the task force or on the collaborative would, would want to go forward and be on the task force. I think that they need to be asked individually. If there's other members out there that would like to serve on it, I think that would be great. However, I think, I think we need to be careful not to have too many. You know, I think a committee of maybe 17 started out to design a horse and that's how they ended up with a camel, quite honestly. So I think we need to keep the number small and workable. But I do want, I do want council review of the RFP when it's, when it's completed. I do want council review of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think, I agree with colleagues about the staff taking the lead and the drafting of the RFP. I just think this is, this has to be handled in the right way and so that people aren't necessarily presented with something that's so technical before they've had a chance to get on that wave early and ride it for a while in terms of what goes into the elements of the RFP and why and all that, so that there's some early understanding of what the, what the structure is going to be, what the content's going to be. And I'm not trying to suggest how you do your job except that we don't want to lose people at, in this process. And so there's going to need to be a balance between too much burden on, on, on community members and too little, too late. That's, that's all I'm saying. I think Councilmember Bragg really raised a good question here in terms of the application of the Brown Act and its limitations on communication outside of the public meeting between, between community members essentially, who are going to need to think about resolve and talk about a lot of issues and aren't used to, just like a lot of us don't like not being able to talk to each other and sort of figure things out, we can't. You know, we have to do that all right here and that, that's good and bad. I mean, it's good because it means everything's in the public eye, but it's bad because you can't, you got to sort of wash everything out in public. It's just, it's very constraining. So I don't know what the answer to that would be other than probably that's a good reason to not go too much more than the five community members, more or less, that have already started, maybe a different five, but that, when you get into a lot of numbers, a lot of people, that's a lot of people who can't talk to each other and, you know, that's going to be a problem. I think the email idea of having community members be able to email the task force, that is also presents some Brown Act issues, but that's a good way to be able to get inputs. Again, you know, we got to talk about all this stuff because we can't resolve it, you know, behind the scenes if there are technical problems like this, we have to, we have to address them now, I think, before we feel we can go forward with, you know, what the process is going to be. So those are just my thoughts.
Ms. Bragg?
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Mr. Spriggs. I think that one of the things, and it happens all the time, is that the first RFP certainly should be a draft and we should go into it knowing it's a draft. And I think, and it's that process that we gain our comfort level, that information is decimated, it's passed back and forth. Staff writes the meat and potatoes of the RFP, but again, everybody goes forward knowing and believing it's a draft. I think that would take a lot of angst out of everybody, everybody's feelings, but everybody has the same information as well.
I've talked a little bit with an attorney and she can clarify it more. If we appoint two council members as the task force at this moment, all right, that's not a Brown Act. The minute we bring in even one member of the public, that's where we get into the problem with the Brown Act is a body appointing it. So to be able to come up with an RFP that others have been able to see and provide input on, I'm wondering if there's a process, and this may be where the attorney can help us or Mr. Wade, if we can entice our two council colleagues, Mr. Bill Bray and Mr. Patton, to be that body, but then the means of going out and soliciting input on that, in other words, I'd like to see a balance and checks and balance on city staff's RFP before it goes and comes back too far. And I believe two members of our council have heard a lot from the public, they've been in this meeting with a couple of members that are very engaged in it. But then how can we go out with a, similar to what Ms. Unger said about this, this website to put the information out there and say, we're giving you, I don't know, 14 days to give us some input before we bring it back, because we will be bringing it back, I believe, when Mr. Spriggs says, it will be coming back to a public meeting here that we have and we'd rather not have everybody saying, I didn't hear anything, I didn't know anything was going on on this. So from an attorney and a staff perspective, staff puts it together, I think council members should have a review on it before it gets any further, knowing that they've heard a lot from the public, they hear from the public, we're not going to get into Brown Act, but then they get that input from those members out there that have been engaged in this whole thing. Is there a way that we can use such as a, an email, website type of thing within a limit as far as timing? I'm talking more timing than, you know, the 31st day somebody shows up and says, I reread it or something like that, you know? Is there a way we can do that and not get this Brown Act thing? We got basically a couple of council members that are checks and balances on the staff side of it, say, no, we've heard from the community, that's not what they're going to go for from their perspective and, you know, from a body of five, I mean, I trust two members to be pretty, think it's going to come back to the full council on it. Is that workable within the Brown Act rules?
Yes, I believe so, if I understand what you're saying. The Brown Act issue comes in when you're, when the council itself is formally appointing citizens to the task force. If you limit the task force that you as a council creates to two council members, there's a specific exception in the Brown Act for an ad hoc committee that's composed solely of members of the council, less than a majority, that that's not a Brown Act body. But if you add any other parties that are not council members, it becomes a Brown Act body, back to the general rule, that any committee or board that's formally created by the council, other than the exception I mentioned, only council members, less than a quorum, it's a Brown Act body. So if what you wanted to do is create the task force of two council members and then have them do a review of the RFP that's created by staff and then do some form of outreach with the community that doesn't involve you appointing members of the community, the task force, that would not bring in the Brown Act. The community could create its own task force to work with the council members, as long as it's not council members.
So what you're saying basically is that if we have two council members, this RFP and however large or small it might be and how detailed it is, at that time, that two-member subcommittee of the council could have a general meeting, if you want to look at it that way, I mean, and the, well, in a sense, a workshop, a general meeting that says, this is what we want to do and they get all that input. Since we didn't ask for who is going to be at that meeting, we cover ourselves under that Brown Act thing. Everybody in here could be there, including more and others, if they wanted to and give inputs on that document that's being prepared.
Right, I mean, and there's other ways you could do the outreach, however you decide to do it. You could put it on the website and have people email in, I think that was my.
Well, I think one of the things that we found out is engaging the community is very important on this and as much engagement as we can have, what I'm a little worried about right now is that... about right now is that, the way I'm seeing it, we're asking a couple of council members to really have to dig into this a little bit and be a peddle to the tip of our sword here.
Mr. Mayor, another way to do this is the same way the collective and, and the two council members work together already without individuals being named by the council. It could be the same collective members plus one other substitute member for Kim O'Neil, not named, will be silent about naming them, and, and, and it would still be staff.
So, that's what they're saying, no formal action from us saying that we want Ms. Unger or Mr. O'Neil or Mr. Spicer to be part of it, we're covered on that.
And keep the same, keep the same group working on this that have already developed some, whatever group they are right now. Or whoever they may be, you know?
Right. And they'll reach out to those same folks, and I know that there's certain members of the leagues that are heavily engaged, and they will make sure that there's people participating in it when we ask for that participation. I think that that's, that's one way of making it work. Mr. Patton, I'm gonna ask you now because you were on this small group, if you and Mr. Bill Bray would be willing to do it along those lines?
Well, I'm sure the audience is probably as confused as, sounds like you. But, so what you're saying is that you're gonna have unnamed group?
Correct.
With two named council members?
Correct.
And we're gonna meet in a named location?
You don't have to name the location.
I just need to clarify.
I know that it's, try to figure out a way, so the folks in the community don't feel they get caught up in this legal conflict.
I'm agreeing with that.
It's California.
Just so that named or unnamed people is a relatively workable group, that it's not so big that we can't get anything done.
I think you were able to accomplish that the last time, I mean, when we, we asked the group to, to limit themselves as far as size of the amount of people, I think they, they actually respected that and worked with you on that one, so. Mr. Bill Bray, would you be willing to do that?
Of course.
Okay. I'm going out only because I saw your hand waving. Ms. Unger, could you come up and say something if you had any thoughts on that?
I just had a question, would setting up a Facebook page where the community could actually post their recommendations or their questions to the two council members for the RFP, would that be, if they didn't, you know, engage or, you know, have back and forth, they just were able to take in the recommendations, or would that be a violation of the Brown Act?
No, again, it just would be a matter of how it was used to communicate. If it wasn't being used by the council to have dialogue among themselves, you know, that would be the Brown Act problem. I, I would also want to see if it's not a city-created website, that there's some sort of clarity or disclaimer that it's not a city website, you know?
I've actually already started a Facebook group.
Or, I'm sorry, a Facebook group, yeah, yeah, Facebook page. So, those would be the two concerns, just making sure that it's not misunderstood that it's a city-generated page, and also that, you know, and I, I think the council is aware of what kind of communications are, could constitute Brown Act problems, just to stay away from that. You know, maybe have it be more for public input than city input.
But I'm still of a believer that you have to, a certain body, up to five people or something like that, need to, once again, sit down with the two council members to make sure, because a lot of it is, when we, you start seeing an RFP, it's not gonna be one of those documents you see every day, all right, just in the way they do their business. So, to be able to have a good explanation of what it is, and that would help you reach out to others to find more input, because you now understand what that document really is all about. Some of it will make no sense, some of it will really not be pertinent, but some lawyer will put it in there for us, you know, and, but I still believe we should have them at a face-to-face with a small group of people, so.
Now, if the community were to have an open, say, Facebook page where they contributed, they went back and forth, they decided this is what we feel should be in the RFP, and handed that over to the council, is that a violation of the Brown Act?
No, that sounds like free speech.
Okay, just checking.
I mean, as far as getting input, I mean, you know, the thing is, is that the original document is probably gonna have so much, and until that document is out there as a draft, the, the inputs are gonna be more difficult, because you might be commenting on something that's not pertinent to even how we have to put something like this together. So, I, I think that's why an actual explanation of what it is is gonna be needed. And maybe the subgroup here is gonna recommend to come right back to the council with it first, so that you all can be here to make comments at that time. I mean, that's, I think, the thing, is that, is that kinda something that we can live with here? Ms. Bragg, I see you have your button pushed again?
I do, thank you. So, in essence, we have a named council subcommittee, and couldn't they just proclaim that they are seeking an advisory council, when you're an advisory committee on this, on this issue?
To just add a little specificity, they could seek that the collective provide five volunteers to work with them.
And that way, they saw that we as a council are not taking action, I think that covers us there.
Right.
As a full council, as long as there's two members of the council, it's not the full council doing that, correct?
Correct. If the only members you're appointing are the two members of the council and the other folks are self-appointed community members, that should be fine.
I mean, does that sound like something that's A-OK with the rest of the council? I know that we're subjecting a couple of you to a little bit more word than that.
The coalitions come up with their outline of what they like, I mean, they're not gonna have to, everybody's not gonna have to reinvent the wheel here of what people want, so if we can just get a draft going.
Sounds good.
I think we could expedite this and get moving on it.
So, from that standpoint, do we have any action to be taking that we have to vote on here on this?
Right, well, well, certainly the creation of the ad hoc subcommittee of two council members would be one.
Okay, so I make a motion that we create an ad hoc subcommittee of two council members, Mr. Patton and Mr. Bill Bray, to look into sports park recreation facilities.
Yes.
A motion in a second? Any comments? Can we please vote on that? And then we want direction from the council for the, that city staff to prepare a draft?
Yes, Mayor, that's what we would request.
Motion carried unanimously.
Direct staff to prepare a draft RFP, and, you know, I don't think it was ever the intention that staff wouldn't be involved in that effort. I think the idea was to have as much input from whatever group was looking at this as possible, so we'd be happy to put together a framework and get that back to the, exactly.
Communicate with the two council members first to make sure that they, okay, so in that case, we need a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft RFP and work with our ad hoc committees. We have a motion in a second or two. Any other comment on that? Can we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if you need to follow this timeline, if you want to follow it.
I think that we might even be able to get ahead of the timeline, just because the process might be simpler than going all the way out to the end of the year. So, hopefully, with staff's help, we'll get there faster. Any other comments on this thing? I know that it's a pretty big issue, seems like we've gone pretty fast now, but I think we have to get someplace. One more time.
Can I ask a question really quick?
You can.
I'm, I'm just curious, now, is this a formal RFP or an informal RFP?
It's not formal until it comes through us.
Okay, so.
Anything that we're going for is a draft.
We're not gonna vote on, on that tonight?
No, 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 we're not voting on any RFP, it seems.
Okay, perfect.
All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Unger, as far as working with the task force, ma'am, you have not really provided much input on that, so I apologize. I don't believe that we have anything else.
It's the blue on your PowerPoint.
Confused, sir? Ms. Spriggs?
I'm not sure I understood Ms. Unger's question. That's, I understand it, the RFP will be issued as a city document with community approval when it's done.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that's what we're here to ask. Not to see this.
We're not doing an RFP right now.
Right, no, we're not doing a RFP right now. I thought that's what your question was, was that, Greg?
I, I just wanted to make sure that if there, it's not just inherent, it outlines going to the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club exclusively. I wanted to know if it's now open for anyone or any entity to apply, if it's gonna be a formal party.
I don't think we've made that decision yet. I don't, that's the thing, I don't think that we, that's why I think the, the group here is gonna work with everybody to make sure that's the direction that everybody wants to go.
Perfect. Well, that's the direction that the public wants to go, number one.
Any other comments on that? I guess that's it, the meeting's adjourned.